Yes. Okay, Mr. Brad Hill is our utilities director, so that makes him, you know, in charge of all the water and the storm water and the sewer. So, Mr. Hill, how many contracts do we have to sell reclaimed water? How many different users do we have?
Mayor and council, we have thirty-eight agreements, thirty-eight customers, and seventy-two sites or locations where the city delivers water, reclaimed water.
And how many of those are out of the city limits?
For reclaimed water?
Yes, I'm sorry, reclaimed water.
Yeah, one. We have several wastewater and water. I don't have those numbers, but...
Right, what is the process right now, under our policy and our ordinances? If you want to receive reclaimed water at your business, what do you do? What does that potential customer do?
Mayor, just for clarification, are you asking for inside the city or outside the city?
Inside the city limits.
Inside the city. I have to say, it depends, because if there's defined through land uses, once approved through city council, whether it's zoning, whether it's development agreements, and then if it's made it through that public process, and then it would be to to the city front counter, to our, to our customer service, and then depending upon, then that would come to utilities, once it come to our customer service, and then utilities needs to make the evaluation of whether we have sufficient reclaimed water to provide that service. So that would be one example of how a customer, in terms of, these are new customers, would come to us.
And what about if the service request is outside of the city limits?
If it's outside the city limits, you have him city code to date, and has been there for twenty, thirty years. For, they would need to come and petition the Water Commission, of which you appoint. At the Water Commission, they make a recommendation, they listen to the applicant. This is, this example is for reclaimed water, water and sewer service. Once the Water Commission makes a, an evaluation and a decision, they have so many days to forward it on to city council, and then you make the decision for outside city service. That's according to a current city code, for new customers.
If there is a new customer outside of the city limits, that comes to city council?
All water, sewer, and reclaimed customers come to city council as per city code.
Outside the city limits?
That would be, that's what you requested, yeah.
Outside the city limits.
For outside city limits.
Ms. Barrett?
So, the reason that I supported the petition that was brought forward by Rudy, requesting a review of the policy that the council adopted, is I think that there are some questions that I think we should, as a council, get answers to that would help inform the next step in the process, which would be, do we want to make any policy changes? Because that is not really the question in front of us tonight, because we don't know what the majority, if the majority wants to consider making any changes. So, what I did in preparation for this meeting is I read the water policy. I also read the city code. And I did read some ordinances, but it's really better to just focus on the city code, because the city code includes, the ordinances are incorporated into the city code. So I'm going to offer some questions, and what I'm asking the council for tonight is just the opportunity to give staff time to answer these questions, and then based on the answers, I think it might help guide us to, guide us in our deliberations about whether we want to actually make policy changes. And the reason I'm asking these questions is because I think it's not so easy to tell what the rules are, based on the language we have in the policy and in the code. So, the first question I have is, can staff explain to the council legally what the difference is between a request for a connection and a request for a reclaimed water agreement? And I'm just going to let Brad write it down. And I believe these are important questions, they have implications. So, it might sound like, oh, this doesn't matter, but it really, in my opinion, matters. And my next question, what provisions of the city code and the water policy govern and/or relate to who makes the decisions about in-city and out-of-city reclaimed water contracts? My next question is, for in-city reclaimed water contracts, there are two categories. There are categories for projects that would require rezoning and projects that don't require rezoning. So, what is the process, or how does the public weigh in during the rezoning process when the Planning and Zoning Commission is making a determination about a use, for example, a golf course? Because it's my understanding that the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't talk about water, that once the use is, once it's been rezoned for the use, then the decision is administrative. But that's a little editorial comment. So my question is, if we could get some explanation of if there's a way for the public to engage and comment on proposed rezonings that would ultimately require a reclaimed water contract? Now, for the, when there isn't a rezoning, is there a way for in-city contracts for the public during the administrative process? And I guess I'm wondering if, if the public really does get to weigh in on a development agreement for a new golf course? If that would be the place where the public gets to voice its concerns about the use of reclaimed water in the city for an entitled property? So there's two categories. And then my other comment, and I guess question really, is I think it would be, it is really important to go through the water policy and clarify what the city means, because we don't know. And I do think we actually may open ourselves up to challenge if it says the city, and we, I mean, we don't even have a definition section to say that the city means city staff, or the city means city council. So at a minimum, I think that, I would like to know, is there a reason we're only saying the city? And if so, what is the reason? And if there isn't a reason, then I think it's worth having a conversation and getting some advice about whether it would be a good idea to be more precise when we say the city, if we mean the city staff or the city council. So, those questions to me are really important. I am interested in ensuring accountability and transparency in the future. And this is not about Snowball, JR, this is not about Snowball. This is about planning for the future and trying to ensure that the public gets to weigh in on how we manage a really important resource. And I think that this is just a one step. So I'm not going to specifically say I want to take up Section C-7.3 or C-5.2. I think those are important, and I think that staff will refer to those in the answers to the questions that I posed. And also Policy C-3.1 and Chapter 7 of the city code. There are certain sections in there that are really important. So I think we need to put the whole puzzle together and maybe a flow chart that shows how the public now gets to engage in the process. And then I think I can make a really good decision about how we might consider proceeding. So that's my request, not for a policy change tonight, but to give staff an opportunity to think through those questions, come back with answers, and then the majority of the council can decide if it wants to pursue anything.
Other questions, Mr., Ms. Putzova?
If I can to add to the list of questions that Celia had, I'd be interested in understanding, what is the difference between a new agreement and renewal of an agreement? At what point an agreement is considered new? I just need to, so that's one thing. I just want to point out that we've heard quite a few people speaking up here tonight. Everybody was, one way or another, interested in reopening the discussion. We heard no comments asking us to not discuss the policy document, and so I think that's important to note. Also, you know, when I, the one section that I specifically am interested in, and there may be other sections, but I've been thinking about reclaimed water contracts, and specifically the process, how agreements are renewed. And the city council reviews every purchase that the city makes, I think above fifty thousand dollars, is that correct? So our, we treat our monetary resources as scarce, and we leave that decision up to, you know, the community representatives. And I don't think that we apply the same principle to, to other scarce resources, such as water. And so I'm certainly am interested in reviewing that section and how we approve water agreements and renew agreements. So, that's me.
Ms. Evans?
So I just want to add to the conversation. I supported the petition that came before us to have a discussion regarding the principles of sound water management, for a number of reasons. I think that this council relooking at this document is no different than us relooking at the sign code. We've done that several times. It's no different than us looking at the land development code. We've done that several times since we've approved it, and it's coming back to us again to look at it. Obviously, things change, new information comes on board. We have new ideas, we figure out we might have missed something on the document. So that's one of the reasons why I think it's time for us to look at it. We approved the document, it's been, I think, at least six months or so, or if not longer, and now we're saying, hey, we might have missed a few things. We want to go back through it and look at it again. I think that's very reasonable. Me, I have various different aspects of this document I'd like to see us look at. But I would start out by saying that on the front page of the newspaper, three days ago, Williams seems to be having a problem with water. And while Williams is thirty-two miles to the west in a completely different aquifer, they're still having an issue. And when I come and I look at our own water sources, I grew up here in Flagstaff, Mormon Lake, Lake Mary and all that, everything is very different, at least with the amount of running water that we used to have. And I think that we can't really ignore that, at least in my mind. That's my personal opinion. I think, first of all, the concept of getting the definitions straight and being consistent with the definitions that we're using in this document is important. I think that we need to figure out, have a concept or a definition for the con, for the use of, or the storage, stored water within this document. What is it, what are we doing with it, how are we treating it? I do think it's a valid point that we should have a section in this document that talks about future water sources or water supplies. And I think Red Gap Ranch, especially with the unique challenges that we have with it and the monetary investment we're going to have to make on it, deserves something more than just a casual mention. I personally have said this several times, I want to look at, I want to reexamine our process of new water contracts, specifically for out-of-the-city limits. This is all new water contracts. Because one of the things that we require for those properties is that they fill out a pre-annexation, this document, paperwork, whatever. In theory, most of those people never annex them to the city, for whatever reason. They're too far out, state law prevents them from doing so, but they're still getting city services. I would like to know if we can charge them an in lieu of annual payment for the taxes that we're not getting from them, because they're out of the city limits. I'm just wondering, that's a legal question. But I think there should be a better way for us to recoup our investment, because they don't pay city sales tax, because they're not in the city, but we're still providing city services. I understand that we can go up, I think approximately ten percent in the rate, but they're still not paying what we all pay here in the city with regards to taxes. And so I'm interested in that section. I'm interested in the concept of who gets to approve what document and when, and when we see it. And quite frankly, I think that there is a legal operation for us to look at specific wording in Sections C.7.3, specifically A, with a concept of unreasonably, what does that mean exactly? And also, what is mine and what is not, given some of the challenges that we've had. So, in general, I think that the city has always historically gone and looked at documents, revisited documents that we have done. At least since I've been on council, we've revisited a lot of documents several times. So it's not unreasonable for us to have approved the sound water management or sound water principle, whatever. It's not unusual for us to have approved a document like this, set it aside for eight months to a year, figure out that we need to go back and relook at and add to it, and then bring it back for more community discussion.
Mr. Overton?
You know, the only thing I'd like to add, I guess, is, you know, I've sat through all the meetings, and I, I think this was a pretty solid effort of the council, and even of April of fourteen, when it was adopted, culminating from various codes, regulations, state laws, local ordinances. I mean, the policy really became a culminating effort of everything, correct? I, I mean, the codes, the ordinances, we were out there with nothing.
Mayor, Councilman Overton, that is correct. What, what it did provide to staff is, we'd have been doing a lot of things without any direction from you, and so this allowed us to put a framework around some of the day-to-day business stuff that we'd undertaken for decades.
And what I think it did allow us to do, though, was look at all of those ordinances, laws, regulations, that you were using in this kind of à la carte method in the prior times, and this kind of qualified that. I still see it as a master plan or a policy framed in the ordinances, the rules, the regulations. I mean, I, I don't think we'll ever agree on every bit of policy language as seven different members to what we think might be the best practice. And I think that's kind of this energy of morphing into this continual conversation of, is it a best practice? We may find new conservation efforts, which I think we could include into this. I, I don't see the necessity, at this point, less than a year out, from the adoption of the policy. I mean, I think it was based in pretty sound logic and reasoning by the councils. I, I still don't see, some of the broadness, for example, I like. Some of that area to where we, as a council, want to have some of that latitude, I think it's based in the ordinance language, but it is based in...
Have you read, have you read it?
Yes, absolutely, I've read it. Not always, but it is based in some ordinance of language. And I know there's lots of different ways to take apart the problem and try to find different angles, but I'm comfortable, at this point, leaving the policy as is.
Ms. Brewster?
Well, I don't know where to start. We do value the audience's input. Sometimes I think you don't have maybe quite all the facts in before speaking. And I don't mean that as a derogatory comment, it's just the nature of how things work, but... For example, you know, if you want us to revisit this and revisit every reclaimed contract, you're talking about seventy-two contracts. How long is that going to take us? And, and what's different about renewal? If, if, I want to ask Brad, if, if a contract comes back for renewal and it's different, that comes to us, correct? If it's a different, if it's a different amount or something different than the original contract?
If it's outside the city?
No, either place.
I'd have to look exactly how that ordinance is written, I believe. Administratively, if it's a reclaimed, again, the, the city attorney wants to speak up, it's probably best if it's a, if it's a reclaimed agreement versus a reimbursement or a recapture agreement, then those by council vesting that into the utilities director twelve years ago.
Okay, but, but the change, if they were going to do a renewal or reinvestment, that does come to us? No?
Mayor, yes, do you want to?
Mayor, council members, just to be clear, the current ordinances require the decision to come to you if it is a new connection.
Okay, new connect, okay.
Not if it's just some changes in the agreement.
Okay, all right, thanks for clarifying that. But, yeah, our largest users, golf course, SCA tissue, I know that you gave me some stats today, on golf courses using a thousand acres of feet, a thousand acre feet of water, compared to Snowball, who uses a hundred and sixty-four acre feet during a season. So, I'm sorry, I think this whole push toward redoing this is due to Snowball. I'm sorry you can't convince me otherwise, even though that it does involve other reclaimed contracts. But tell me one that's controversial that's reclaimed. There isn't any. Golf courses, okay. But would you rather they use potable water?
No, I'd like to see it go away first.
Well, I doubt that's going to happen.
Ms. Brewster, let's not get in the dialogue.
So anyway, yeah, okay. All, practically all of our users that use reclaimed water are part of our economy here, whether it's SCA tissue, whether it's golf courses, whether it's Snowball. FUSD brings in kids, they bring in families. So, the alternative to not using reclaimed water is using potable. We don't, you know, Flagstaff has a reputation statewide as being one of the leaders in the use of reclaimed water. And in fact, many of the other western states, golf, no, golf courses, snow, snowmaking places are looking at reclaimed water now, because we've set the standard for that, instead of using potable water or, or natural snow, because practically all now ski resorts are supplementing their natural snow, because it is dry with some kind of snowmaking. So now they're also looking at reclaimed. We ought to be, we ought to be promoting the use of reclaimed. I, I get the feel from some of you, from the audience, that you want to curtail the retail, curtail the reclaimed water by making customers pay the full rate, which will definitely turn them off of reclaimed, because it'll be higher. That's the whole point in using reclaimed waters, to make it cheap enough, so they don't use potable. Anyway, my bottom line is, I kind of go along with what Mr. Councilman Overton said about, you know, this has been vetted and barely in place a year. We've had ten meetings on this over the year. We went through every policy publicly. So, I would say, let's give it a chance to work before we start taking it apart.
Ms. Evans?
Okay, so, I just want to add a few things to the conversation. I don't disagree that Snowball was not the catalyst to start a water conversation here in Flagstaff. Before the Snowball contract, I would say that while we were paying attention to the concept of water here, we were not paying such strong attention. And I actually think that we should thank Snowball for being the catalyst to start a huge community conversation about the importance of water and what we're doing with our water, quite frankly. I think for us to sit here and talk about the future of our water and say, this is just about Snowball, I think that we are giving too much credit, then, to one organization. Right now, the contract that Snowball has is in place. So anything that we are talking about now and looking at this particular document truly does not affect what's going on with Snowball. It affects what we're going to do in the future of how we handle, handle our water supplies. So I think we just need to kind of get that out there. Also, I feel the need to point this out. The zoning code process that we went through, I was here for four years of it, we had over four hundred and eighty meetings. Roger's not here, maybe he's watching us on TV. Maybe he can come down here and tell us how many meetings he had. But he had, for the zoning code, over four hundred and eighty different meetings with different shareholders about the concept of zoning here in the city. We had ten meetings regarding water, here at City Hall. The meetings that we had regarding the zoning code was all over the community. I also feel the need to point out that within the first twelve months after approving this zoning code, which cost us approximately eight hundred thousand dollars, because we also had consultants working on it, we were giving up office space here for consultants and everything else, within the first twelve months of approving that document, they had over four hundred meetings, we reviewed and changed it twice. And within the next, I know we reviewed it at least once, because we were back there at that table, and we reviewed and changed it within the first twelve months. And within the, within the next six months, we're going to review that document and change it again. So I think for us to sit here and say that it's been in place for just a year, this is my personal opinion, and that we should let it play out, maybe we should have done that with the land development code that cost us a lot more money to produce.
Ms. Barrett?
So, I'm understanding that the majority is not interested in pursuing this, but I would like to know if I can get answers to my questions in a CCR, so I can help the community understand how they engage in the public process, and if they can't engage in the administrative process, how that administrative process works, so they know where they can't engage. So, I, if no one else is interested in the answers to my questions, I think it can inform a conversation that I have outside the city council chambers with all of the people in this room who have been urging us to at least have a further discussion.
Well, hold on, before we get to what direction we're going to take, let's, let's see if we have all the comments. Ms. Putzova?
So I actually'd like to know, is there anything, since this document was adopted in April, Mr. Hill, that you've learned that you would be able to make this document stronger and better and protect the city and Flagstaff residents more? Something that you know today that you didn't know in April, and, and making changes to this document would be more protective of the city, because that's what, and, and the residents.
Ms. Barrett?
So could I, could we get a legal opinion about what the definition of city is?
All right, well, okay, enough comments. I can see that there's some questions, and certainly any council member, those are reasonable questions, and they don't sound like they would be too difficult to get some response, and so we deal with that all the time. The question now before us tonight is whether there is a majority that want to reopen some specific portion of the policy so that we have something concrete to say yes or no to. So my question for council is, is there four that have some direction in mind here to the staff, we want to reopen whatever section? Or is the majority, let's leave it the way it is right now, and possibly at a future date, we will have a specific section that we want addressed? Ms. Barrett?
So, I'm not prepared, I was under the impression that tonight was an opportunity to ask questions and get clarification, and so that's how I approached it. I'm not, I don't have the information I need to cite a specific policy. So I, I'm sensing the council, some on the council say, if you can't point to C-7.3, then there's nothing to discuss. So if the will of the majority is to say, let's not do anything, then I'll read the answers to the questions, I'll talk to the community, and we'll come back, the community will come back if it sees fit, based on the answers to the questions, and make another appeal for the council to take up something specific.
I, I think that's the appropriate process. And so, Ms. Putzova?
Well, I, I think the answers to the questions are very important, and I think the public deserves to hear the answers in public. And so I would propose that we, that we come back on this very topic, hear the answers, and once we have the answers, decide... and once we have the answers, decide on the directions to go, but do it in city chambers because I think that, you know, it's one thing to have a nice document and here are the technical answers. We may have a clarifying questions to ask, and I think it's very important for the public to hear because they, you know, they came here, they made an effort, they petitioned us, we put it on the agenda, we went through all this process all the way here. I think we should at least give public another chance to hear the answers to these questions.
Okay. So do you have a specific motion in that regard?
I would like to move that we continue this discussion with the next meeting, whenever is scheduled, dedicated to getting answers to the questions posed and making determination at that point whether there is a majority that would want to reopen any particular section.
Okay, so your motion is to postpone this discussion to a future agenda after the staff has had a chance to respond to the questions asked tonight?
Yeah.
Okay?
To, to set a specific date in the future, yeah.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second to postpone this discussion to a date that can be scheduled by the city manager and giving the staff enough time to give some answer to the question. Ms. Evans?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we have all the questions then out, that staff is going to come back and answer. There was one question from one individual in the audience that I'm looking for, that I did not get a chance to write down, but I thought was a very valid question, and...
It was about city discretion?
Yeah, it was about city discretion. Is that person still here?
Yeah.
Is there any way she can come back up and pose that question? Because I'd like to hear the answer to that question.
What was it about?
It was about city discretion, wasn't it?
What does it mean, definition?
It was in the reclaimed water section, C 5.
Come up, come up to the podium.
So I didn't get a chance to write down that question?
It was in Policy C 3.1, and it, it is, "Any proposed modifications to the terms of an existing reclaimed water agreement will require the applicant to obtain a new reclaimed water agreement, which may be entered into or denied within the city's sole discretion." And then there's also Policy C point, C 5.2, which also refers to the city's sole discretion in the sale of reclaimed water, in the creation of reclaimed water agreements outside of city limits. And so I think this is similar to a lot of the questions that you are asking as well in, can we have city's sole discretion defined?
Okay, and then also, I mean, and maybe then it wasn't you, but someone else had mentioned, what, at what point does something become a new contract? After so many changes, when does it become a new contract? Was that part of your original question? Okay, I'm sorry, that was you. Okay, you can sit down, I apologize. But I think that that question should be answered as well, if staff is going to go and get answers. At what point do, at what point with new changes to an old contract, does it actually become a new contract?
Okay, that can be added. So there is a motion to postpone this to a future date and answer the questions that have been posed tonight. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
No. Motion fails four to three. All right, is there, is there another motion? I will, I will move that no specific direction be given to staff tonight other than to answer the questions that have been posed by the usual CCR process. And then if there is some, something specific that someone on council wants to bring up at a future time, then they have every right to do so.
Can we have a roll call vote? Can I make, can I, well, you didn't get a second.
Hold on. Hold on, a roll call vote on what?
On your motion.
Okay, it hasn't even been seconded yet. Okay, so my motion is that we give no direction to staff tonight to take any specific action other than to answer those questions by CCR.
I'd second it, I'm comfortable with CCR.
Okay. All those in favor?
Can I get a roll call vote for that?
No, I, I want to discuss. I want to say something about the motion.
All right, we'll have a roll call vote. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I just have another request for the CCR. I would really appreciate it if we could ensure that there are no internal conflicts in the water policy and that our ordinances are, that our code and our policy are consistent. And I realize that's a big task, but based on my reading and some of the things I heard tonight, I think that there is a possibility that we may need to make some changes so that we don't have conflicts.
And then they very well be possible. And my point is, I would like to know exactly what it is we're addressing before we sit down and have that discussion. All right, so there's a motion to give staff direction to take no specific action on the policy and to answer as best they can the questions posed tonight. So that will be roll call vote.
Mayor Neighbors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barrett?
No.
Councilmember Brewster?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Nope.
Councilmember O'Vitz?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes four to three, and so the direction on this agenda item is no direction at this time.
Why do I get to hear the questions?
At this time. We'll come back, we'll get, we'll get some more information.
Why do I get the answers, though?
The answers will be on the website, and they will be fully available. You can ask the city clerk's office for copies. There, there's no secrets. There's no secrets in the CCRs.
Ignoring the public?
So the public is welcome to them.
One person here who asked you to do what you just did.
Okay.
You guys are awful.
All right, so we're on, this concludes...
Rudy, you need to be careful. Respect the chamber. There is no respect for us. Excuse me.
This brings us to the next agenda item, which is 15B. This concludes this item. It may very well come back when we have a specific issue to address.
You were incorrect in what you said. You didn't sound too smart.
Hey, ma'am, we're not having arguments across the chambers here. We have a process, we'll, we'll get to all of your issues. All right.